Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, October 30th, meeting of the Montpelier Designer Review Committee. I will let staff and members introduce themselves.
Meredith Crandall, staff.
Stephen Everett.
Eric Gilbertson.
Seth Mitchell.
Benjamin Jean.
Unless anybody else has anything to bring up, do I hear a move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Go here a second.
Hi, second.
And all in favor of the agenda, raise your hand. So, we'll go forward with the first application for 100 State Street, continued from the October the 15th hearing, owner Capital Plaza Corporation and Mary Heaney Trust, applicant city of Montpelier. This is a proposal for the parking garage. And, just in terms of introduction, I also have to admit that I am a butter to the Heaney lot. I own a property that's adjacent to the Heaney lot, but I have no predisposition one way or the other because of that. So, if anybody has any concerns, I'm okay with it either way. So go ahead and present the newest iteration of the parking garage.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Greg Rabideau from Rabideau Architects. And also with me this evening is James Finley Sheeris from Wagner Hodgson, our landscape architects. I gave this to you in print form. I also have it for the screen. There are a couple of extra sets here. There's like three extra sets if anybody in the audience is dying to have one. What I thought I would do is focus on the issues that were most important to this board last time we met, which was, there was some discussion about an arch feature that was kind of found to be architecturally not entirely relevant. And I think we got back with our client, which in this case was the mayor and some folks in city government, and I talked to them about where we were, and we've come back with a new proposal, which eliminates that arch in favor of a couple of things. This one gesture solves a number of problems, but if you look on the cover sheet, you can begin to see that the solution to our problem is probably best illustrated on this, oh geez. I keep forgetting this rendering here, which is just the same thing, a little blown up. Sorry. What's been done here is that we've raised up a boardwalk that spans between the garage and the bike path. So that as the bike path comes around from the east, or from the west by the hotel, there's a large landing area there, which is at the bike path level, is elevated above the floor level of the garage at this point. Eliminating that arch feature in favor of having this boardwalk come up to the building, and then at human scale, we've got some smaller art panels shown that complement the larger art panels above. Those could be regular pieces of abstract art, or they could be something that relates to the history of Montpelier. For the painted on parts of the artwork, we've agreed that we'll have a public process where the actual art itself is procured. You can also see on this image, which is kind of a blow up of it, you can see this set of relationships, including the ramp which was added on the east side of the parking garage. Takes us up from existing grade to bike path elevation, stopping off at the midpoint for pedestrians coming out of the garage to collect into the same feature. So people coming out of the garage, going to the downtown, would come out this side door here, showing them the lower right-hand corner, and up the ramp to the bike path proper, across the bridge, and over to downtown on the bike path.
The other access is across the west side of the building, or the east side of the building?
There's still a walkway that goes between the hotel and the proposed garage, which comes down and connects to this boardwalk at the bike path.
Okay, but I'm talking about the east side of the building. There's
Oh, on the east side.
There's trees and stuff in the way that I could see goes past the two entrances to the
That's illustrated.
Lower floor of the parking garage, and out, if there's a layout or plan, I don't know where to quite go. I think I found it.
If I look on C 1.1, which is our site plan proper for the garage, I think I understand what you're asking, Eric. Starting from State Street, there's a painted bike lane that runs down the Heaney lot, avoiding the backs of parking spaces, and resolving itself at this access drive to the overlooked park property. That's something that's protected by an agreement between the owner of that parcel and the owners of the Heaney lot. And then down at the lower corner of that access to the overlooked park parking area, you can see where there's a level landing pad, and then the ramp starts up and wraps around the southeast corner of the building, and up to the ramp, up to the boardwalk.
And that ramp is something I ride my bicycle up?
Well, it's accessible. It's designed per the ADAG, and it's wider than normal, but we still think that the city ought to put up a sign encouraging people to walk their bikes on the boardwalk. This is going to be a confluence area where bike riders coming from over on One Taylor Street or from downtown are going to converge on this boardwalk area. I just see somebody coming down that in a bike. I mean, you could do it on a bike comfortably, but what happens if you run into a pedestrian going the other way?
These are sharp corners.
Can you stop fast enough to
Or on a scooter.
Yeah, any number of things. I expect, I mean
And you're constrained by this dotted line here, that corner, that is the setback? Why it can't be any wider?
This dash dotted line is the 20-foot setback. As we understand it, the, in this district, within that setback, you can impact 50% of it. And I think that's what the reg says, that it's a 20-foot setback.
Well, there's, it's a 20-foot water setback,
Yeah.
but in UC1, it's a 15-foot riparian buffer.
Okay.
And with, so, you've got, this is one of the things we need to hash out. It's still a potential issue now that you added in the ramp under the zoning regs for ERB levels.
I will say that we've discussed this with the civil engineering team, and it's their position that this is a channelized stream bank.
And that would solve that issue.
By virtue of the fill material and the stone facing that's been put on the banks there. This is not a unconstrained river.
So, that's something we'll be dealing with at the Development Review Board.
But, yeah, I mean, there is a property line there as well, and we obviously can't go over that.
Right.
And in all of this, I think the renderings show it, we still need to have the volume underneath it empty for stormwater purposes.
Yep.
Which it's still doing.
Greg, did you want us to turn the lights off so you could show any of this up there?
If the audience would like to see any of it, we could. I mean, it's probably easier for me to go through the paper version, but, you know, I'll put the rendered image up. And if anybody wants to see that, we can just turn the lights off.
Would anybody like us to turn the lights off so you can see what's up on the screen a little bit better? Maybe we should. It's going to get really dark in here. Do you want me?
So that's the image anyhow, and what we're talking about is right in the middle of the image where you can see those colorful panels. We've changed the design to include this boardwalk, which will be up at the bike path elevation. And that basically gets rid of the arch as a concept on this, which is fine.
Have you thought about any benches or anything on the deck that's there? It's pretty good size.
We have thought about some site furnishings. I know that the package that's submitted for the fifth includes the built-in tool racks. I'm showing a couple on my landscape rendering plan as well, just simple wooden benches there. Here's, if I can, I don't know if I can zoom in on this.
Was there any more discussion regarding the trellis, I don't know what we're calling them, the steel?
Sculptural features?
Sculptural features.
Yeah, that's my, I'm going to go to that next, but I just wanted to zoom over and show you the boardwalk
Yes, sorry.
up in detail. So you can see there are, the little red things are the bike repair station. One of them is a pump, and the other one is a rack that's got allen wrenches, spanners and stuff on it for people who, you know, want to stop and fix a tire, or, and then you can see there's a little bit of an arrangement of benches there as well.
And the decking is proposed to be pressure-treated, E-Pay? I don't know.
I don't know about pressure-treated. What we think it would be is we would use solid concrete plank to span the opening, and then we'd dress it with a suitable tropical hardwood to provide the walking surface and make it more boardwalk-like. The idea being that we want to discourage people from rollerblading and stuff into this sort of pause point, slow people down a little bit, so I think having that surface helps.
This would be a good place for a bike rack, too.
Yes, and we are still planning on putting bike racks in the garage. But I don't know if we've indicated any on the site here.
I think this is a nice addition because
Yeah, I like that.
it's a gathering place, and I don't know how much of a view of the river it has from there. You've got the railroad bridge right there. I just, I can't, I assume there's a pretty good view of the river? Or at least the back and the stuff on
Yeah, obviously the riverbank is on the other side of One Taylor Street. But for the north branch, you know, the area in and around this bike path as it comes up onto the new bike path bridge, it's going to be a real place to congregate, I think.
I think it's a huge improvement from the last go-around.
The other question I had is, Paul Carnahan wrote a very thoughtful letter about access to the river. And I think, and I thought of it afterwards, yes, this really does block the river. So it's, I think it was really good to provide those accesses in a really clear way. And I don't know whether anything can be done. I think it might be a place for Art is on the entrance to the alleyway between the hotel and the parking garage.
Oh, okay.
You had something, just a sign that says "To the River Walk", you know, made with some nice images.
Okay.
So people would really clearly know that was a way to get to the river. I'm big on benches.
Yeah.
My niece told me to be that way. But, you know, to add some benches so people can, that can serve as a meeting place for people. Or people can sit there and rest, or whatever.
All right, well, as you can see, we've indicated five benches. They're kind of in a
Yeah, I'm thinking about at the entrance, although on the other side, on the other side.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And, you know, a sign on this end of it, signs that say appropriate, you know, to State Street.
You're saying right there where it says, "Proposed eight-foot line."
Yeah.
There's the front door, there's the front door to the garage, and then there's the path between the two buildings with the property line between them.
Yeah, and something out on the, away from the river side, the north side, I guess.
I think that's something we could stipulate without having to come back. I mean, we would happily agree to that.
But, just, some places it makes it look like an attractive way to go for people.
Yeah, and obviously the wayfinding stuff is important as well. I'll get back to you.
I have just one question. It's just back in that section that you were at.
Hold on one second. If you want, I don't know how you want to run it tonight, but when you do ask a question, you're going to want to come up to a microphone so everybody can hear you. So hold on one second.
I was going to suggest that as well. Why don't you come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and then ask the question that you would like.
So, hi, I'm Elizabeth Parker, and I've been very much interested in this bike access, and I'm excited about what you're doing with regard to the area where you can repair bikes and sit. My question is, as it's drawn now, and it may just be the surface that you're trying to describe, but I just wanted to make sure that if there is going to be a railing along the top of the retaining wall, that it is going to make a sharp turn back along the side of this terrace that you're creating, and not run along to the bike path, that that is all going to be open space from the north-south side of the terrace over to the other side of the terrace? That there's going to be, it's going to be easily accessible? Is that the concept?
Well
Or what are you conceiving of there?
This is the bike path proper here where my cursor is. And all of this land up here with these trees and stuff shown
Right.
is at bike path elevation. This little area in here, as well as these two triangles of space here
Are below.
are down below by like six feet.
I understand.
So we're showing a railing going across here
Perfect.
and then along here.
Yes, that was my question.
Back to that corner.
That's exactly wonderful.
We don't know and can't say anything definitive tonight about the final disposition of a fence along the train tracks.
Yeah.
Because Tom McCardle brought up the notion that it may be a problem to have a fence on both sides of the tracks.
That was my question. I just wanted to make sure that that's where the railing was going to go, and that it wasn't going to continue along, and then that little section that runs right there.
Right here.
Whoops, no, down, well, it doesn't matter anymore.
Down here.
You've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, and then this, the formal bike path crosses over to the One Taylor Street lot, and it's to become Confluence Park right down here. I'm going to go to the next page here if it'll let me. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the next page. All right. Well, here you can see that fence that she was asking about here going across the top of that. What I was trying to bring up are the last three pages in the set. Sorry, not my laptop. And I'm going to have to do this then. So I've prepared for you three options, and I don't know why these are squished like that. The proportions are weird because this sidebar menu that I would love to close, but I don't know if I can. Do you know how to close this menu here?
Yeah, if you click this little small arrow right there.
Maybe go to full screen? I don't know where that is.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks.
And Ctrl-L, maybe if I was going to
Well, forget the vertical proportions for a minute. This is option one, which would be what I've done is I've presented three options with the opening decorated in a distinctive way, so that we can talk about these openings. Because the building's a big complicated thing, and there are lots of moving parts, we didn't articulate every rendering with every option, because we just don't have it in our budget to do that. But here's what we're calling option one. This is a dimensional steel frame that sort of forms a portal arch within the masonry. And then it's braced by a couple of diagonal braces with some big plates, big plate connectors at the corner.
This is on the north side of the building?
This would be any of those masonry portions where we've got the big openings. So this is one of the alternative ways of decorating those large openings. We're doing something very similar on a project right now in South Burlington called Larkin Terrace. It's on Shelburne Road, down by the McDonald's in Burlington. And we're using the steel to chase around the openings with the masonry like this. And what it does do is it gives us an actual load-carrying member that can act as the lintel for that large masonry opening. And it also gives us a sort of tidy transition between the brick and the structure behind, because I can use this frame element to define that line. And then what you're seeing in the background, which is going to be common to all of these, is a proposal. This is a fiberglass fabric that's 50% open. It forms a sort of solid screen on which we can have images printed. And what I'm showing here is that scrim, if you will. And I've printed on it sort of industrial-looking gears and stuff. You know, thinking about this thing as a railroad trestle bridge. So at any rate, what the scrim would do is it would hide the precast elements behind and sort of provide a sort of solidness to this opening, so that these sculptural elements can kind of play in that space without
These would be fairly easy to change, too, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I think they're meant to last for a good long time, but they could be changed over time, yeah.
Is that what's also preventing me from falling out?
Yeah, it would do, it would provide for free ventilation at the same time. It would keep you from going in, or it should be helpful in terms of keeping snow and winter and rain and stuff from getting in on those intermediate levels as well. So, this is an option to that problem, but it doesn't have
That would be another great place to have a competition.
For the screen printing of the material?
Yeah, whatever the design is.
Yeah.
Not, I mean, I can think of, in some places, a photograph of a train might be a good thing to do. I'm assuming you can draw photographs in image you want.
I think the sort of more graphic and abstract it is, probably the longer lifespan it'll have. As far as, I'm sorry, what I'm trying to do here is go to the next option. All right, so here's the original concept plan. Again, it would have that scrim material behind it. And then you've got these four-inch steel pipes that are wending back and forth, as you can see them this way, but they're also going back and forth in the plane. This was my original concept, and I still like it, so I'm going to keep it on the list of options. But I think one thing is, you know, we've always intended for that to have some color on it. So this is, I think, me showing it with a variety of colors happening. And then there was one last version of this, which would be a very traditional thing that's being done in interesting ways these days, is a perforated masonry screen wall. So, we would have the mason lay this up in an interesting pattern, and occasionally the shaded parts would be spots where we would have them leave a block out. They can turn bricks partially, leaving them project, or otherwise give this a very sculptural look. This is a pretty solid-looking thing, though. I think the idea has some currency in the design world right now, and it certainly works with us as far as, you know, providing a ventilated wall that's still solid. I'm not sure this is my favorite option, but it is an interesting idea. I think it just would be a challenge to find a mason to do it well.
Just give me an idea of how many openings you would use one of these treatments on. I can't figure out how to count them, but
The four outside corners of the building are essentially where the solids are. There are two more interior masses that are solid as well. So there's six potential locations for this. And I would like to suggest that we use one approach to all six. Because we'll have other variety going on art-wise. As much as I still like my original idea, I'm also really kind of fond of option number one as well. It speaks to what our original design intent was, which was to sort of recall the adjacent rail bridge in an abstract way. Oh, geez, sorry. There. I think for those of you who are looking for this steel thing to be more understandable as having a job to do and a purpose for being there, this is pretty strong in that regard. And we have a lot of flexibility and creativity that we can employ on this screen fabric material.
I think I like number one. I mean, you can vary it with different designs in the background.
I agree. Option one is, I like it a lot. I'm a little worried about all the different designs, like between the murals, and then like having all these different panels of like trains and gears, and just, it begins to feel like a lot to me. I mean, I would have to sort of, and then with the plantings, and you know, it's like
Yeah, the scrim doesn't have to be graphic, though. It can just be scrim.
Understood.
It could be very subtle, you know, blacks and grays.
Well, that's what I'm hoping.
And then the steel structure could replicate the railroad bridge, which is already there anyway, which is, you know, the standard railroad truss of the time.
I think it's a nice tie-in rather than the abstract. Okay. I like the meeting of the steel and the brick, and, you know, we've done this recently, and I've really been thrilled at the results, just because it, you know, I mean, the masons like it. You know, it does serve this real structural purpose, and it tidies up a lot of details. Those of us who've used brick veneer understand our corners and times when things come together where you're like, "How are we going to hide this?"
Yeah.
This does that. If the board were a solid yes on one of these options, and I'm hearing some support for one, we would just propose to apply this everywhere it occurs before we go to the Development Review Board for final approval.
I would suggest a design competition for the background. I mean, that gets public involvement. It gets people interested in the project. It makes it understandable publicly. And maybe you could work with the Vermont Council on the Arts, or
Yeah.
I don't think you should have to do that, but I think as part of the project, it would be interesting. It would produce some variety, so all of these things wouldn't look the same.
So the scrim is, the representation is just a placeholder, is what it amounts to?
I'm suggesting that there's a lot of flexibility there, and I think, as with all the public art, that, you know, art conveys meaning, and what that meaning is really ought to be, you know, it's up to the city to express that, if that makes sense.
How much do you estimate those panels cost, fiberglass panel screens?
I haven't priced them out, but, you know, $5,000 maybe. They're not that terribly expensive. This art, you know, the art that's painted on would probably be, you know, bolder and meant to show more. But, you know, this would go from these to that more restrained kind of look, which probably plays better with the storefront and some of the other stuff we've got going on black metal-wise.
I think the idea of the gray or subtle look of that as a background is great.
You already have the center of art in it, work.
Right.
And then you've got the greenery around, and to try to make this stand out, it's competing too much with everything else. So I think the more subtle it is,
Yes.
I think it'll draw the attention to the other components better.
I think you're right. And you can sort of see here this background with just a plain gray scrim behind it. And really, all it does is it hides the precast parts in a kind of a meaningful way, you know.
That's kind of what I was, my question. So in section, if I was to look through that thing, I'm going to see sort of the diagonal slope of the ramp going up to the next level.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the scrim allows, so I don't
So you don't see those transitions.
And then you wouldn't have to put railings at two elevations at some sort of strange pitch.
The design is subtle in color, and everything, they're not going to clash with each other, even if they're quite different. You know, different focus.
I agree.
And Montpelier really has a tradition. How many projects have we reviewed for art on the streets? A lot.
A number.
Yeah, and it's, it's been something that Montpelier is doing. I shouldn't remember the name of the architect. Ward Joyce. Yeah, Ward Joyce.
I just wanted to add in, this is relatively new, but last week's city council meeting, the city council adopted a public art master plan and created a city arts commission. So they would probably be a logical group that would guide a process for something like this. So that is, as you note, more public art is coming into play, and there's a plan coming together for how to deal with it.
Thank you, Bill. We could get some graffiti people to do it.
Well, you know, they, do you know what goes in? They painted the backside of a Champlain transportation thing, and they did. They had a bunch of street artists come do it. It was amazing what they came up with.
Some of those guys are really good.
Really good, yeah. I think that's gone legit. Banksy selling paintings for millions of dollars and then chopping them up.
That was pretty good.
Worse more chopped up than it was
The trick is not to encourage expansion of the area.
To encourage expansion of the, of the area.
There was one last image I wanted to bring up, if I can, sorry, I'm having trouble navigating here. I'm gonna do this.
Yeah, I really do like one, because it can provide some variety, and it looks, and it makes structural sense. The, just cross pieces made no structural sense to me.
I'm bringing this image up for, for one purpose only, and that's to show what the possibility of putting a solar array on the roof of this garage might look like. And what we've presented is that the project is designed so that it can accommodate this kind of thing, I don't think it's in our initial budget to provide this solar panel, but I'm gonna float the idea out there that, that this is how we would go about it, which would be like a solar carport that did not extend out to the edges of the building, but only covered the two center bays, and that would, that would do a couple of things, you know, sort of reduce the apparent mass in the building. I brought this up because I think some, there, there were some comments by the public who were curious about this, and whether or not it was something we still were interested in, and would, would love to have your input on, on whether or not you think this is appropriate. But at the same time, I'm not really asking you to take action on this, because I don't think we're offering up solar panels coming out of the gates, but, but I did include this image just for the purposes of having that conversation.
How, how much taller, it's, looks quite a bit taller than the corner stair wells.
Yeah, well, it's going over the ramp in a way that it's eight feet at one end, so it's, the end that we're looking at is up thirteen feet. That's one issue with doing it, is that you're gonna see it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be up there.
Will you see it, like, if I'm walking along State Street, looking up, I mean, realize it's pulled back enough so that?
Yeah, you'd probably see it, I probably wouldn't jump out at, as anything outrageous, but at any rate. I just wanted to show that to you as part of the conversation, but not necessarily a sort of central issue for this evening.
Is, is it possible to construct a building, so this is really easy to put up?
It's, it's possible for it to be structurally sound enough to take the extra weight, for us to have the weld plates and stuff in the tops of these sheer walls, so that if, if the city elects to do this, because you get a grant, or, or somebody wants, you know, then, then we would, then the building would take it, it's gonna have conduits going up to the roof and everything.
And even, even to the point of the fastening, so that it would be really easy to fasten it?
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Is that we'd, we'd have the buried weld plates in the tops of these precast panels, so that if somebody wanted to attach this, they could. Anyhow, it was sort of a sidebar issue, but I wanted to be responsive on that. There was also something I, I wanted to talk about, because I think this gets it. It's been mentioned in a couple of public hearings that, that people don't understand how our images could show the garage being taller than the bridge, but it looks shorter in certain, from certain perspectives, and I just want to point out that the reason that happens is because the floor plane of the garage is ten feet below the, the western abutment of this bridge, so we're starting out in a fairly deep hole to begin with. The bridge is twenty-five feet tall, but it starts from a point that's ten feet taller than the, the building's first floor, and just by virtue of being in the foreground, the bridge does look bigger in some of these issues, but we're, we're, we're confident that these models are accurately representing the buildings as proposed. So, with that said, I don't have any more formal, I think we, we had three things to talk about, how this project connected to the bike path, what to do about that arch, and what to do about those decorative openings, those were the big three takeaways I came with from our last meeting, but everything's on the table, and I've got everything with me, if anybody wants to talk about any particular edge.
Quick question, what's the difference with the bridge over the north branch, where that, what's at, at grade on the other side, on the parking garage side of the north branch, what's the difference between the grade there and the crossing over the tracks?
Well, it all kind of comes up to about five twenty-eight at the bridge abutment, so the railroad track and the bike path are all sort of up around five twenty-seven, five twenty-eight, right there at the west end of that bridge. And then it drops down to natural grade of like five nineteen, and we've graded some areas in that, that was a sort of pit behind, behind the garages, that's excavated down to five eighteen, so there's, there's a ten-foot drop.
Please go back to the view you had before.
Sure. So.
Hole, you just had your, your cursor, the one further, right there.
Yeah.
How, how deep is that?
Well, the floor elevation is five eighteen.
And the top of it is?
The top of this wall here in this location is gonna be, I think, five twenty-five, right at the corner of the building, and then this.
So that's about a seven, six, seven, eight foot hole.
Right, at, at, at the, at this, this little wedge of space is down in a hole about six, seven feet, and then the tracks and everything are subtly rising up to five twenty-eight right in here. Top of, the normal top of the bank is, is at roughly five eighteen right along here. So this was all designed to just be a top of bank elevation, so if it ever flooded, the waters would come in and go back out without needs of pumps or.
And that, you're not putting any trees in there or anything?
Well, we are actually proposing quite a bit of landscaping in there, but, you know, we didn't show it in our renderings for purposes of, this is, this is what the landscape plan looks like, or the, what the building looks like with, with the actual proposed birches in front of them, and what James has done is, is he's made those birches a little bit transparent, so you can kind of read behind, boy, this is tough.
Landscape plan would show the birches?
Yeah, so you can, you can see the trees here are ghosted in in the foreground, and then you see an initial growth of the vines going up the green screen. Here's, here's those benches again up on the boardwalk, and these little individual art panels along here, and then the major art panels up above. And you can also see here where we've programmed some circular openings into the green screen, and the plant stuff is kind of growing around them. There we go. So you get to see the bike path and the, the ramp.
I have two sort of questions, one is, is this bridge a placeholder, is that something that you've designed, are you responsible for this pedestrian bridge, or is that just?
The bridge across the river is a separate project designed by StanTech and already approved, I think it's gonna be constructed soon.
Okay, so that's.
So, no, we did design the, the ramp coming up from the haylot to the boardwalk, but.
Yeah, yeah, and then, I guess what, sort of been other issues, and now I'm beginning to sort of focus a little bit on the cornices, and sort of some, what the materiality of that horizontal bands are.
Go ahead.
And we'd just like to hear a little bit more about what that is.
Before we move on to that, I was wondering if there's somebody in the audience who had a question about something that was being talked about?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Meredith Kitfield, I live here in Montpelier, and I'm interested in lighting, how is this gonna be lit up, and I don't see any lights or posts or, and also I'm concerned that it's going to be adding to light pollution in our city, so I'm wondering what kind of lighting you're gonna be using, so that's directed down, downwards, as opposed to letting it just go up to the.
Sure.
Sky.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All lighting for the project is LED lighting, and all of them have what they call controlled photometrics, so they're down casting shielded lights. We have typically, on the sort of street-like portions of the project, which includes the hotel and a drive-in from Taylor Street and then back out to State, and all the public ways, is this type SL1 here, which is a very traditional looking housing with a, with an LED, with, with LED guts, and so this is, this is really beautiful elegant type fixture that's, that's gonna be most of the site lighting here, and those, those do have controlled photometrics. We did submit a plan showing point by point the, the values for that. I'm just, sorry. In addition to that, there are, the light fixtures inside the garage itself, which, I think I had less time. Oh, boy, I'm gonna try to get this right. Nope, sorry, I knew I had a fifty-fifty chance there.
I think if you went back to where you found that SL1, I think there are other, other ones that I've seen or in there.
Okay, well, that was.
Yep. Some of those.
Yeah, well, some of these are just wall mounted, these happen around doors and stuff like that, they're nothing special.
The SL8 is out in the back though, area, right, by the boardwalk?
Yeah, let me close this down. Sorry. The SL8?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
Ah, this is, these are, these are ground mounted lights that are meant to shine up, and I assume they're pointed at the artwork. No, but they wouldn't be.
Actually, I did the lighting.
Come up and introduce yourself, it's okay.
The light point's actually on the other side. James Finley, Sheriff's Landscape Architect. The idea for these lights were to create a glow down in those flood gullies that we've been talking about with the birch plantings, they'd be pointed horizontally, so they would give a glow if you looked over, but we've done the photometric plan on it, and there's no light creep from it as they're protected by the six-foot retaining or eight-foot retaining wall in the building on the other side, so there'll be no light creep from them, they'll just create a nice sort of glow that you'd look over the, the side of the railing at. All the other light fixtures are cutoff fixtures, and so they've been designed to meet the security foot candle minimums with no night sky issues.
Talk, talk a little bit about the color temperatures.
We're gonna be using all of the yellow three thousand color, so it won't be the white, blue LED, it'll be a nice sort of yellowish light, you know.
Warm white.
Mimicking incandescent, that's right, or the MR16s of the old halogen world.
The fixtures within the garage and then on top, top level?
Those are a little different, I was looking for those, I did, I did show those to you at the last.
Right.
Meeting, but the ceiling mounted light fixtures, oh, boy.
I think it'll come back, yeah, I think it needs.
Alright, there we go, sorry. I think I gotta look for.
Could I just make one observation?
Yeah.
This is Meredith Kitfield again. So, as I walk along the bike path currently, Stone Cutters Way has one type of light fixture, and then I go over by the high school, and they, that section has a totally different kind of light fixture, you know, outdoor light fixture. Has there been any thought to kind of integrate the light, lighting for the bike paths so that it's somewhat consistent, or is that not a good theory?
The bike path as it has been designed has a Vega fixture, and so the idea is that will be consistently along the bike path as part of that StanTech project. So we use those foot candles within our photometrics survey, but there is a consistent light going through the new Taylor Street and, and on in the new bike path.
Which kind of fixture, the ones on Stone Cutters, or the one on?
It's, I'm not sure, it's, it's a Vega shoebox is what they call them, so it's a very simple rectangle, about a fifty foot.
High school.
Fifty ones from the high school.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Hit the lights real quick. Left thumb, then we've got a mouse. Make this go a little bit easier.
Let it go faster.
Ah, there is one. Alright, good having one.
Alright. So.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
This was the light fixture we talked about at the last meeting, which is a ceiling mounted light fixture, that goes up between the flutes of the garage deck, and that's, that's an LED fixture as well. And it is vandal resistant. The question was asked.
Yep.
Depends on which mounting system you use, but we wouldn't use the long pendants.
And top deck is Vega, or that's something else?
The top deck is, this same pole has a, it has a pole mounted fixture for it.
Ah.
It's a little different than a street lighting.
Is it like a gooseneck off the poles?
I should be able to find it here, now that I found the right folder. Down to your spec. There, shows you the side mount.
Okay. When all the hardware pulls, everything is what, a black?
That would be my choice, yeah, it comes in black, silver, white, or bronze, I think, but I was thinking black.
Yeah, all the rest of the sight lighting would be black, too.
It seems more compatible with the rest of the structure.
Right, the steel, yeah, I agree.
So, after you talked to Ben's question about materiality of the project with the cornice in particular, I think you were mentioning, could you address, I'm, I'm pretty sure we asked for options on the picket fence on the lower level as well?
Okay, the, the general material palette is, is the standard common brick, the string trims and aprons that you see are, are the Vermont granite, and then we were gonna have this made out of either like a glass reinforced concrete or an EPHIS, just because we didn't want to have a lot of weight up there, and, and this is, this is a pretty big cross section, this, this cornice, so that would be built up, and then.
I mean, GFRC would be definitely preferred over EPHIS.
Yeah, right, durability wise, too, I think that's probably true, we don't, there's no advantage to having the insulation be involved, really.
Right.
But we would have these prefabbed and then bolted on the top of the wall.
And then you're capping it?
With, there's an aluminum coping called to go over the top of all of it, just, just as a weather course. Then we have the.
And it will be painted to be up similar speckle to the granite?
The.
The GFRC?
The GFRC, yes, like a, like a polymer mix type paint, I thought you were talking about the coping, I think the coping.
Oh, no.
In my mind, the coping was just gonna be black.
Yeah.
But yes.
I care more about that big thick visual band being.
Right.
Similar to the Vermont granite.
Yes, but obviously to get, to get something two feet tall with a projection of about two feet, you know, for the eight hundred feet of perimeter or whatever, it could get really expensive, so.
Yes.
We, we are definitely using the granite where, where you're most likely to be able to see it, put your hands on it.
Have you looked into polymer composite?
Oh, yeah, for, instead, instead of glass reinforced concrete?
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, either one of those, I think, would be appropriate, it's really gonna become down to what fits our budget best. And then the green screen, I have a piece of that, but that's, you know, that's gonna come with a factory finish on it, it's kind of a dark green.
And is, regarding your sort of like steps and why you've kind of broken it up horizontally the way you have, is there a logic to it?
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple pieces of logic, one is the language suggested by the zoning ordinance, which I know. which I know doesn't necessarily apply in this design control district, but the intent of it, you know, something was brought up by one of the neighbors who popped into one of these meetings. Uh if you read the the standard, you know, broadly speaking, you know, the goal of that was to make sure that you didn't have one section that was longer than forty eight feet long. And that these things kind of read as individual three story blocks with speed, you know, the sort of vegetable spacing between them uh was very much an intention to sort of repeat more of the scale and 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 rhythm of of downtown Montpelier, which tends to be three, four story masonry buildings and and they tend to be, you know, one business wide, you know, historically.
Yeah, I was speaking more of the specifically to the cornice as much as I am interested.
Oh, and as far as how much up and down it goes was or was that was just a reflection of its relationship to finished grade. So here it's it's more or less at sort of guardrail height. But the ramp is falling away behind this, you know, so um having them step up and down a little bit, instead of having one consistent top line was part of that effort to sort of, again, kind of be suggestive of individual building blocks with sort of green space between. And the so, you know, this landing over here is five feet higher than this landing, so you know, the whole thing is popped up a bit so that this is again, this parapet's kind of at handrail height on this end of the building as well. It's usually the the green screens are doing most of the reaching.
Nice rendering.
That was James.
That was Liam.
Okay, thank you, Liam.
So we talked about different different growth stages as well. Is that something that you have represented as far as the?
What we wanted to do was show here sort of year three, four, uh rather than the other, uh the architectural renderings which show it sort of fully grown. We thought this was a nice sort of stage to to look at it. And again, I was talking last time we met about the idea of the way these vines kind of find their way up. The green screen is actually being kind of a beautiful thing outside of just having a full sort of a one solid texture of green. And so, yeah, we like how it sort of climbs up to the top and then sets it sets its um twines up there and then kind of come down and then will fill in and around the around the the apertures Greg's Greg's made in the in the green screen there. We want it to look good from day one, day two, day, you know, year one, year two, year three. So we think we've we've come up with a nice solution.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
This is Meredith Kitfield. Um I was wondering, can some kind of banner be hung over that um artwork? Let's say you were having a special festival in Montpelier and you wanted to put three banners up. Can you actually put something over that artwork?
Yeah.
It would be temporary, it would be like a a flag, uh some kind of a flag or a banner.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we could certainly design the hardware in there to receive it, you know, some kind of U-bolts or something that people could hang onto. These panels sit back from the main face of the masonry like four inches. They're they're pushed back, they're they're just in relief a little bit to give this wall some texture here and sort of express these these pilasters. And that was meant to give each piece of a frame, you know, uh but that that gives you a a space in which you could work if you wanted to do something like, you know. A lot of the people who make the same scrims that we're talking about here make precisely those kinds of things for like New York Fashion Week.
Yeah.
That kind of stuff where they just cover the whole side of a building with something temporarily. I don't have it in my budget to provide the temporary art, but I I don't see any reason why this couldn't be sort of set up to receive that, no problem.
Could you hang something from that top lip, that white lip that's?
Probably rather didn't do that.
Oh, okay.
Um only because that's the sort of beginning of our waterproofing system and generally when people start getting up there and drilling holes and stuff. We're telling water. This this would be, well, it'd be a lot, something a little more, it wouldn't necessarily be plastic. It'd be a composite material, uh either fiberglass reinforced cement or there are some polymer based ones that are solid. But it, we're not talking about Fipon or anything here, if that means anything to you.
So can somebody actually walk over to that lip up at the top or is that off limits?
Uh uh well, at this end and this end, I would be the top of the wall, the top of the parapet would be about forty two inches off the deck.
Oh, sounds kind of like a barrier.
When you're parked on level four and a half, you'll be able to stand right behind this wall and look out at downtown Montpelier.
Oh.
And this is level four down here, five feet lower, but you'll be able to look over the bridge and.
So cocktail hour, right?
People use these garages for all sorts of things. I, you know, I.
Fireworks viewing.
I used, I remember when Ben and Jerry's used to show movies on top of Cherry Street Garage.
That's right.
It was a good time.
So how about the picket fencing?
Yep.
We have a cut sheen. Where'd I put it though? This is, I'm just opening this because this is our our retaining wall. We should talk about that before we part company. Uh what did you name, what did you label that thing?
I think it was just called railing detail. It should be in that pack.
For today's.
Yeah, I saw you guys were just talking about it. It's just a very simple sort of steel square railing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've got a couple of things I needed.
It was in the last one. I mean, worst case, if you turn the lights off and look at the hard copy.
Yeah, vehicle charging stations. I don't want to forget that. So just open that while I see it.
Excuse me, can I just ask how many um electric charging stations are currently budgeted?
Just make sure to state your name.
Oh, sorry, Laura Rose Montpelier. How many charging stations are currently in the budget for the garage?
Well, um. We've got two pieces, we've got two data points. One is I believe that the city ordinance now requires so many electric charging stations per parking space and based on that, I think we believe, I believe I came up with a quantity of twenty. Now, uh the city manager, assistant city manager, I believe, went up and toured the project in St. Albans and the operators in St. Albans said that that would be too many. So uh it's 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 uh it's up for you to tell us how many you want because um otherwise we'll provide twenty of them. And I'm not sure, uh there's some policy level decisions that have to be made, like are those exclusive use use spaces, which I would suggest they shouldn't be. And, you know, if if you're not gonna use them right away, do you want to spend the money or would you rather install them as they get in, as they get absorbed? But to the to the best of our knowledge, we have to present twenty unless somebody tells us that it's okay to do fewer.
And how many are currently paid for in the current budget?
Well, I don't know that any of it's sort of been given a line item in the budget, but uh there's been a sort of generous equipment budget right along. I I think that also includes like the ticket taking equipment and stuff as well. Um so I can't answer.
I I did hear that the number was four and that seems um in other meetings, so I'm wondering.
Uh I didn't know there was a number in the ordinance until I stumbled across it and then once we did, we said, well, that's the that's the answer, so.
Twenty are required um by current law. Thank you.
A suggestion on the charging station, I mean, some of the, I know some of the space is flexible to state for use, but if you install the infrastructure, the wiring for the charger, charging stations, and so it's just a matter of molding it on, if you maybe install ten and you have ten that are easily, the uh access rules had a a a class of, you know, fully handicapped and they had one that's called adaptable.
Good.
So that the, you know, the plates and everything are in place. That's what I'm kind of thinking about that need. If you if you need the extra ones, uh I don't know whether they'd all be in one place or not.
Well, the only thing they have, the only thing they have to be is they have to be above elevation five twenty eight. So they're gonna happen on level one and above exclusively because they've got to be protected from flood inundation. We have done a lot of these in our hospitality work with hotels and generally what what we've done in those circumstances is had an outside vendor install them and the outside vendor makes a little money every time somebody uses it. Kind of similar to the ATM machines at a gas station. You know, it's not really a bank, but and, you know, they don't really have anything to do with it.
Well, I'd probably convinced that there's gonna be more demand for them in the future. That's the only thing I'm thinking of is.
Well, I hope you're right and I think your ordinance anticipates that. I think the policy level decision is really uh would you want to make those spaces exclusively for the use of electric vehicles? Because if you do, then, you know, that's twenty spaces in a lot if they're not being used. If they're being used every day, great, you know. But that's a policy level decision. It's not really a design issue. I know that this this was about a uh a brand that we liked because it worked with both uh both types of battery formats and had the built in uh accounting software and stuff like that. You know, you'd need ten of these and we would probably put a couple on each level.
Yeah, I'm just saying extend the wiring so it's real easy to to add because that's certainly gonna happen.
And this is pay for service?
You pay for the power, yeah.
Yeah.
I I assume I don't, I I this the city would get killed if they didn't. I'm sorry, say it again.
It's tied into the city's meter.
Well, um we're working with a specialty consultant on the the hardware that runs the garage. I think in in my experience, parking is one thing and charging is another. Because I think probably what will happen is when you you come in, you'll get a ticket and when you leave, you'll pay. And if 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 you need to charge your car while you're there, you'll do that transaction right at the post. It's my thought. I, how it's operated isn't really a design consideration. It's more of a public policy decision. But uh I don't see any reason why the city should give the power away.
They can set those up just with a sticker credit card and and it'll charge for, you know, whatever power you use.
Yeah, yeah, I'm assuming the revenue goes to the city.
Bill, are the ones being at by City Hall, are they pretty well used all the time for charging?
A lot of the times, yeah.
Just to note the microphone can touch way over there.
Yeah, you know, they're they're restricted for EV vehicles only, so um yeah, I think that, you know, I don't monitor them carefully. We're, they're third party revenue at this point, so the um we're not monitoring their use, but. You know, just anecdotally, I'd say I see cars there more often than not, but didn't I, I wouldn't say it's hundred percent.
Well, it's always been part of our thinking to have them. Our thinking has evolved recently to say we should have more. Um and yeah, the only reason I'm asking is is we're getting advice from other cities that are running garages that twenty might be an awful lot, so I don't know how you want to dispose of that issue if it's really a issue for this board or not.
Again, the the number of charging stations can be changed at a later date with, as Eric said, with the infrastructure. And besides, the the number of those would be a point for the DRV to take up anyway.
Okay, good. Just for the record, I mean, this is the retaining wall system that we're calling for. It's a modular unit system with a nice dress face on it. It is not a casted place concrete wall. I don't know if you want to say anything about it, James?
Uh I, that is, that's, that is the wall we're proposing. This wall will tie into the bike path bridge wall, so there'll be a bit of working out as they presented a unit block wall, so we'll hopefully use ours.
Is the design you show for the bike pass bridge, the one that, I I don't know whether it's a decision has been made on that or not. I mean, the bike pass bridges that we have before are are steel truss.
Right. Uh no, I I think that's just something that we gleaned from the civil drawings. We didn't have any of your options to show. I mean, obviously, that's not part of our project, so.
Right.
We're not asking for approval of that.
I just thought maybe the city would know what.
The plan view layout is from the Stan Tech approved plans. Plan view, I don't have the material elevation of the bridge itself.
I might understand that the base block is, it's sort of shown in the upper left hand corner there on the last slide that you just had up. And then there are, what I'm seeing on the bottom is a variety of faces that you could slide onto that.
Correct.
And the one you have chosen for the face is the bottom left hand corner?
Um yes, and the idea is that we get it in a color to sort of match to the granite. The idea is that it would be as close as we could get to that granite.
And I'm assuming it has some sort of faux stone texture to it?
That's it, yeah. Yeah, there's sort of levels of uh undulation in that, in that. Something like that. You can see the two different levels of texture there quite well in that, so our 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 goal was to to match the natural stone as closely as possible.
And do you build the whole thing with just the the raw blocks and then put the faces on later?
Yeah, there's like a, you can see actually in the, that's exactly right. So you set these base blocks and then you can slide on the veneer pieces. That's a new one from Unilock.
Yeah, I've never seen that before.
Yeah.
And I guess the idea is if something bad happens, you can replace it?
You can pop it out and then the other the other idea is sort of you could articulate it the wall the way they show in that sort of the other piece with the sort of more texture could help you proportionally break up that wall a little bit more and give you sort of a.
Are these fastened together with mortar or are they just loose?
Um they will be, uh we'll have a structural engineer review, obviously, whatever the final detail is, but I believe that mostly they're gravity block, but they will have tiebacks into the grate that they're retaining.
Yeah, just thinking about tipping.
Did, yeah, they'll, no, they'll be pulled back. They'll have dead man pull it back with with coffee.
I don't know if that's our issue or not, but I'm curious.
Uh we don't have a lot of surcharge. It's not like there's a big slope coming down from behind this wall, but you do have with a railroad, you know, you've got some pretty dynamic loading. So we just have to make sure that the structural occasional truckload of granite doesn't vibrate the thing into submission.
Less than casual, it's becoming more.
Well, I'm happy if they're busy.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Sorry. Uh I'm trying to think of other loose ends here, just.
I was still looking for the picket.
Oh, the fence, sorry.
It's, can't find it. It isn't the packet that we gave you.
I did see that.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me just say this. I'm not, I'm not a fan of the picket. I think it's not the way to go. I'd like to see something either horizontal or gridded off. Some other treatment would be much, much better.
We're, we don't love the horizontal because it sometimes can do, get the ladder effect and have people climb up and over it, but I.
But you have that going on here in all these railings.
Uh I think that's just a render artistic liberty with the rendering perhaps. Ours are, the way we've designed it is up and down. My understanding on that, one detail would show them vertical. Yeah, sorry, let me find that cut sheen.
Whether it's horizontal or not, if it's gridded off, you know, it seems like the picket is.
So you're saying maybe a mesh panel or something?
Yeah.
Prefer, yeah, that?
It just seems like the picket is is a little bit of an afterthought. I mean, if you've really brought the rest of the project up and listened to many things, it just seems like the picket needs some attention. And then there was some debate as to whether we actually needed them. Some believe that we need them and some don't. Is that, are we mandated by some sort of?
There is a, the code, anything more than thirty inch drop would require.
Understood, but.
But and so I wouldn't use it anywhere else.
It was a security. Yeah, I thought we were talking about.
Oh, on the elevation of the building.
Yeah.
Oh, Greg can speak to that. I was just talking about the safety railings.
I'm sorry, could you ask again? I was digging through this file. I could.
Curious about the need, the where the need for some of the picket fencing, especially at ground level, is coming from?
Security at five, at the bottom level there if we still.
You know, I think just in talking to the police and stuff, there was some concern about keeping people from wandering into the, I don't know how I got into that. From people wandering into the garage from our back, um but uh, sorry. Boy, I have opened a real can of worms here. Yeah, so we were trying to keep people out of the lowest level of the garage.
And that's what, that's their primary function?
Right, that was, that was all of it.
Can, can I speak to that just real quick?
Please.
So my understanding is that they're gonna have security cameras at certain locations, like at the entrances, but they wouldn't necessarily have security cameras along that whole bottom level where the fencing is. But they need to be able to let the water in and out, so they can't just put a wall there. Um and then they have security cameras like in the stairwells. Um, and then they have security cameras like in the stairwells and the pedestrian entrance, entrances, but they need to be able to have some idea of who's going in and who's going out. I think that's one reason they had the fencing.
Yeah, I'm just not finding that cut sheet. We do have paper copies. This just sits in here somewhere, very little places to look.
And I think somebody had another question.
Okay.
Hi, Elizabeth Parker here again. So I, I talked about this, um, at the end of, uh, two meetings ago, and it's, it's just a little point, but I have an editorial part of myself and if things don't get changed, then I'm concerned that they will be this way. So my concern is, again, that handicap parking, I believe in this diagram, is shown in the northeast corner, uh, not close to the elevator, which is in the northwest corner. And I think it'd be great if those could be contiguous. Am I incorrect or, I mean?
There's the elevator and here are some handicap spaces.
Okay, cause I'm looking at a different drawing here. So maybe this is out of date.
It, it could be, uh, but generally, the, generally they're between gridlines one and two on the level adjacent to the stair tower.
That makes me very happy.
For showing.
Is it a stair tower and it's in the northwest corner where there's an elevator as well?
That's the elevator right there.
Perfect, okay, good. Moving on, um, and so then my other question, and maybe I missed it just now, cause I was thinking about this question, this previous question. Um, it, on the east side, on the ground level, where the fence is going to be, is it going to be, I know that on the northeast side, there will be a fence that can be opened up should cars need to leave for some reason. But on the east side, is there going to be the ability to have, um, an opening fence still, which was discussed at one point, um, on the ground floor? So that for instance, if there was a need to have an event that you could go underneath and have some sheltering for a community event or some expansion of the market or some such thing?
You know.
Where, where does that stand now?
I recall that conversation and, and I don't see any reason why it can't happen, but I don't think it's illustrated on this plan.
All right, I just think that it might be a nice feature for.
We're in agreement about providing it, I just, I, you know, and trying to keep track of everything we talked about, we were focused on this entrance here.
Right.
Which got you, you know, sort of out to the bike path and, and over to the main street, but, uh, um, we're talking about one down a grate around the corner and I just.
On the east side.
It would, it would be, you know, somewhere where these openings are.
Yeah. So I'm just putting that out there as being a feature that.
We just need to put a symbol there indicating that that's an operable gate.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you go back to the image of the deck in the back? Cause I didn't see where the, uh, alleyway ends up from the front.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand.
But there, where does the, from the alleyway between the hotel and the garage? Okay, I see, I see why it didn't show up. Yeah, there it is.
So it's, it's.
It doesn't show up in that image though.
It's hard to read in that image. I think in this image, it's, it's going along the top of the wall here.
Okay.
And turning the corner.
I just wanna.
So it's, it's a little hard to see at this resolution, but.
No, I, I see where it is. I just, it just doesn't show clearly at all in the image you were, we were looking at.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, it's just, uh, sorry, I can't, you know, navigate this thing.
I, I, I just wanna say again that, you know, decorating that and signing it so it's an attractive space for people in a welcoming way. I think people tend not to like to go down alleyways even if they're lit. And so making, may, you know, breaking that up and, and making a nice entry on the front side of the hotel.
We have green screen wrapping around that, the sort of southern part of that right there.
Right there, so.
Which will enhance at least, you know, that make half of it wonderful.
So as you come between the buildings, you know, about, about, after about forty feet, you come out from behind this and then it's open into this garden. In the footprint of the building at the ground level, we've got some openings, some window openings from the fitness center to the alley as well, so that as you're walking down there, you're, you're, you get some visual relief. But I, I agree, I mean, it's, it's, that's a, um, that's a, uh, tight, those are tight quarters. Not everybody's gonna like.
Because of the, I mean, the, the, most we can do to keep, keep the garage from sort of being a barrier to getting to the bike path in the river, uh, would be good.
Well, there's this, which I think will function really well for hotel guests. Um, you know, there's some outdoor patiary and the swim pool is down adjacent to this space as well. But don't forget, as I pointed out earlier on sheet C1, um, the, uh, you know, the design has, has been improved to include that bike path connection through the Haney Lot and out to State Street there as well, which I think people who aren't staying at the hotel are gonna be much more likely to use.
And just, uh, maybe it's a space for some more creative kind of.
So you see the bike path indicated here, all the way down to here. And then, you know, so I think that then you get on the ramp and you come up to it.
And, and both there and at the entrance, the other one, some, some graphic that's big enough.
Yes.
That people know that they're, they're headed, that that's the way to head to the river or something, something you could see from State Street that would make sense.
Yeah, signing to compliance.
Signs and, or some, I, I'm not a designer, that's, that's what you guys do.
You make a good point. No, but I think we're finding signage is important. We, we do have a plan, which I don't know if you, if this board will get involved in that, but, uh, um.
Probably.
We had a traffic plan. But I'm wondering, um, I think it's in this set here.
I noticed the package you sent home was more than sixty-five pages.
Well, that was a combination of the new stuff and the old stuff, so we would have everything, but.
And I, I thought some of the pictures really did a good job of showing what it might look like at night.
That's the planning painter's fault.
I'm sorry, there, I was looking for a plane with the traffic signs on it, but, uh, I'm not seeing it.
Laura Rosemont-Pillar, I was wondering if I could ask about the width of the walkway between the hotel and the parking garage? How wide it is for that, huh?
The buildings are ten feet face to face and then we're showing an eight-foot wide walkway.
And the walkway on the north side of the garage, how wide is that walkway?
Well, the, uh, the constricting point would be the ramp and I, I believe the ramp is six feet wide.
And does that north walkway still put pedestrians in the path of cars entering and exiting the garage?
Well, uh, if we go back to that civil engineering plan I had here a moment ago, in this particular case, uh, you know, there's, there are crosswalks, you know, from State Street to the main entrance of the garage, there's a major crosswalk here and also a crosswalk here. Uh, so pedestrians are gonna cross vehicle traffic at controlled points there and there, after which they can go down here and through here and attach to bike paths without having any interactions with cars.
Yeah, but my, my question is if you're coming from the east side of that north walkway, heading west towards the new hotel.
On the north side of the garage?
Wouldn't you encounter cars entering and exiting and you'd have to cross that to get to the protected walkway out to State Street?
If you're talking right here?
Right there, the entrance to the garage, please.
Yeah, uh, that garage, that secondary entrance is only there operationally for emergency purposes. Uh, I think we learned from talking to the folks at St. Albans that every once in a while a car gets stalled or somebody gets in here and they can't figure out how to pay and they just lose it, whatever, that they, that the exit could get blocked and so the city needs to be able to open up a secondary way to get people out. Operationally, this is not meant to be used on a regular basis.
But wouldn't they have to cross the, the western north entrance to get to the walkway? To get out to State Street?
I think anybody coming from the Haney Lot is gonna be going down through the parking lot.
No, I'm, I'm saying if you come in by the bank in between the Christ Church and the bank, um, but you wanna head over to the, to the edge of the Haney Lot or behind Christ Church, wouldn't you encounter the traffic entering and exiting the garage?
Right there you would, yeah, there's, at this crosswalk.
And what would be there to protect, protect pedestrians?
Yeah, I have a traffic control plan, I just have to find it. We have, showing stop signs and the like.
Is it, I don't think it's, uh, what is it?
Or at least, I know there's three.
Aren't four-way stops extra dangerous for pedestrians? Cause it can be confusing about whose turn it is to drive and you're, you're watching the cars, you're watching the pedestrians, but, you know, that can be quite dangerous.
Oh, boy.
And again, Mary just brought it up again, that that's more of a DRB issue in terms of the access as opposed to the design review. But we'll certainly make, you know, a note of that for the DRB committee to take a look at.
But, but there are regulations related to pedestrian safety, um, so I'm hoping those are all in, under consideration with the planning stage. Thank you.
Taking some notes so we can add it to the recommendations.
When's the DRB meeting?
Monday of death. This coming Monday.
Coming Monday, yes.
And it's the.
Steve, I think maybe it'd be a really good idea if we, as design review, sent a note or had Mary to send a note about.
She's got some talking points that are about items to be forwarded to the development review board.
Yeah, oh, great, great.
If, if you don't end up with a final recommendation tonight, we can just make sure we agree on all the points that you want me to bring to them that aren't on the recommendation form.
Can somebody outline kind of a schedule on this? I'm getting really confused as to, okay, when do you need final approval?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll get it when we've earned it, I guess. But, uh, if, 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 if everything went well for the city, I think we would, we would like to have final permits before the voters go to the poll on November sixth.
Oh, and you won't get final permits? At least have final decisions.
Final decisions.
Or verbal, verbal decisions, cause, okay, just cause.
Right. Uh, you know, there was a very, uh, very strong goal to try to get this under construction in December. And, uh, that would, uh, a lot of pieces are gonna have to fall in part in place before that, uh, can be a reality. But, you know, having done this for thirty-three years now or whatever, I, 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 I can't make such predictions. I mean, it's entirely, it's entirely up to you how fast we go. I feel like we've answered the substantive issues that were brought up before. It sounds like we still have an issue on the fencing, but I, I would hope that wouldn't be a reason to hold up the project because we're happy to continue to talk about it. It's just, um, I, I, I think we need to know that there are major design issues before the voters decide whether or not they want to do this.
And I believe there's somebody else who wants to.
Well, I'm just concerned, it sounds like you might be edging towards wrapping up and I never heard a point where you were asking for public comment. So is this the time now or I'm happy to wait?
Now go right ahead.
Okay, and questions?
Introduce yourself as well.
Yeah, this is, I'm Sandy Vitztum, I live at fourteen Loomis Street. And before I make general comments, I wanted to say personally how excited I am that, that we might be getting a kind of good-sized hotel in town. I think it's gonna make us, uh, as a city, able to do a lot more things culturally and for business than we have before. Um, I don't know if I've said this to this group, but, um, I happened to meet an independent contractor for National Life from Maine and she was brought here for a week and she was put up in Waterbury along with sixty other people. And they never, ever came to downtown Montpelier in the whole week. And I was shocked that, that, that as a city, we've, we're losing this kind of business opportunities. I'm actually speaking tonight, um, behalf of the Montpelier Heritage Group. I have a couple of questions, um, cause I've not become before this group before, although we've had other members here. I'm gonna first ask questions that I think are specifically design review and then in interest of time, tell me if my other questions, which are gonna be at the end, if you would rather that they go to development review board, okay? The first question is about my, the drawings, the red renderings that I've seen. It seems to me they're applicable for a couple of reasons. One, it's permitted use downtown, but we're trying to understand the gateway relationship of this, uh, uh, of this building, both coming along Memorial Drive, but also, um, it's, it's kind of on the gateway down State Street towards the Capitol complex. So, um, I actually don't know that I've seen any from the ground renderings except of the bike path. And I'm totally, uh, wondering what this looks like from Memorial Drive? If I were in a car driving by and would I see the State House? Have those renderings been done? And I missed them.
You missed them.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they've been presented on a couple of occasions.
Okay, that's fine, I totally understand I could miss them. I'd love to see them, uh, sometime and.
There's one of the boards, when we turn the lights on, that's.
Okay. And also from State Street, have you folks looked at what this building is going to look like behind the Episcopal Church? Cause come, for instance, coming down Elm Street, that's quite a very big, important view in the city.
Uh, we presented views of that as well during the approval process for the hotel. I don't know that we've revived those of late, but, um.
From, from the ground level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find them as we talk, but, uh.
That's fair, I know that's kind of hard. The other thing is, uh, typically balloons are flown and we, I mentioned that at a meeting a while ago, I think it was a DRB meeting. Have you indeed flown some balloons so that we can all see exactly the correlation between the renderings and reality?
Nope, um, that was a city decision, I'll let them discuss that. But I believe flying balloons is a public hearing and it would hadn't have been warned and, so, we were told not to do it.
Bill, there was a question about flying balloons and the city's stance on it.
Uh, can you come up to the microphone, Bill, please?
We felt we were confident with the renderings as far as height and all that, the, the various things, we didn't think the balloon was a necessary. We consulted with our folks and didn't think it was necessary from a permitting perspective or for anything else. We had, uh, the information, there's, uh, telephone poles there that are approximately the same height as the garage and they're pretty easy to, to look at, so that was our, our call on.
Turn the lights on, they can hold up the board, which you had from Memorial Drive side.
You've got the, you're the light man.
Oh. People are ready for a light? Here we go.
Yes.
Right next to your arm, Bill. So that was. So that's, the parking garage is coming right through here, so if you're, I think this was taken from like the Shell Station, so the, even the, the church towers.
The dome is way over here.
It's way over here.
I'm just gonna.
That's the view from State Street.
I'm just gonna suggest again that if the city were willing to fly some balloons, I, and I know it's difficult because you're both the applicant and the reviewer in this situation, but if you could fly balloons for three days, um, then people driving by could actually all see for themselves.
You can see there, there's the Capitol way over there.
Right. So this was not, this was the way someone asked besides?
Correct.
Correct, that was something that was presented by Stephen Whitaker at an earlier hearing.
Okay. Then, uh, another question, I, I hadn't really become aware of the alley until tonight. And I actually, if, there must be some other accommodation for hotel guests with their little rolly wheels trying to get to the hotel besides having to be outside and on the alley, I hope. So that's one question. And then, uh, in general, uh, I've talked about this at the DRB meeting. I'm totally confused, is how this, it seems to me we're trying to develop clear streets and clear walkways in the city. When I grew up, it was a village of back cuts, back shortcuts, and then a lot of them are gone as we're trying to make. gone as we're trying to make the city more clear as an urban pattern. So I think I heard, Bill, maybe you can correct me, is that we're building a street out to, between the garage, is it going to be a street or is it an alley between the garage and State Street?
Well, it's a complex of things. It's a, it's a, in the first case, there's a legal easement that's been granted to the city over Capitol Plaza to create essentially a private road that extends from Taylor Street through the Capitol Plaza site and then back out to State Street. Anybody who's experienced the parking area back there now knows it's a little chaotic in terms of how the parking spaces are laid out, and circulation is kind of ad hoc, you know, it's just sort of what's left between spaces. This will organize that into sort of a clear circulation pattern connecting those two major streets. Essentially, the trip from the Hany Lot to the garage is similar, although that's not going to be something that's used on a regular basis for access to the garage. It's really pedestrian bicycles, secondary access, and other uses. But essentially, those, what you see today is what's going to be there in both cases.
Okay, so then in that case, the city is creating more of a non-conforming lot, and we has no street access then, except by an alley with an easement over it?
The zoning ordinance allows for lots to be connected by easements to the public way as long as they have the right dimensions, and we have met that requirement.
But then this is functioning as a way in and out for three hundred and however many vehicles, I mean, they're not going to be there for twenty-four hours, so it'll be more than seven hundred trips a day, probably.
Well, we submitted a traffic analysis, I'll let that stand on its own, but there's two hundred and six spaces back there now that are used every day. So this isn't like we're taking a cornfield and doing this, this is a parking lot now. And, you know, building this garage will plant some existing parking lots, which offsets the impact a little bit. But in the main, by providing, you know, this parking, it makes Christ Church's project more likely, it makes, you know, all the downtown business owners have accessible parking.
So I just want to say that overall, it feels like what is now a pretty sketchy road for Northfield Savings Bank between that and the church is going to be more of a road, particularly people who are not from the city trying to find a way to use the parking garage. And it seems to me it needs to be a street. This is, that's a personal thought. But if it is, it needs to have a sidewalk on both sides, it needs to have safe parking itself. I'm wondering if you're going to lose some of the parking spaces that are in that kind of alley now?
Well, the plans have been submitted and the numbers have been counted. I mean, we're going to have three hundred and forty-eight spaces at the garage, and we're going to have fifty-five spaces left on the surface of the Capitol Plaza. That does not include the remainder of parking on the Hany Lot, which I don't.
Yeah, and then that was one of my questions, how many spaces are you thinking you're going to lose on the Hany Lot?
Forty.
Forty. Okay. Then, my other, I think, pretty strictly Design Review question is about the solar collectors, which I had not heard of before tonight, I think it's a great idea. But in my experience with the Vermont towns and then actually other states, if an owner is thinking of having a second phase that actually is supposed to be part of the first phase of permitting. So I don't know why you would mention that you might do that in the future and that you're building for that potential, but that's not being permitted now.
Because somebody in the public asked about it, and we want to be, you know, we make all our projects solar-ready.
Yeah, but then it should be part of the permit process, right? Because then it wouldn't, that's how it's typically done.
We can deal with that, but I don't know that the city is committing to build it today.
Can I address that?
That's correct.
So the, as zoning administrator, if that were to go up, it would be something that they would need to get another permit for before those were put on. So they're just showing sort of a, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is this was sort of, like you said, a response to a public question as to how it might look and to show where they could put in the infrastructure so it could be done, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't get, it's not getting approved at all.
Usually if there's a leading towards the future of something, it's better if it's included upfront, just pointing that out. It's better to have it done and say, okay, yep, it would work or not work. My understanding is it wouldn't put you over the height limitations.
No, that wouldn't be a problem, because it's a six.
I don't know why it would be an issue. Wouldn't, it would increase, it wouldn't increase your FAR.
There's two issues, and one is that the city has maxed out on their net-zero metering situation, so they don't necessarily, they can't necessarily just use a net-metered solution for this. And I think the other is budget-wise, which it wasn't, it wasn't part of the original charge. And, you know, we've had to add some other features here to get this to where everybody finds it acceptable. Obviously, we want to include it in our thinking always. Whether or not it happens right away is something that's really up to the city. We just want to know that our design will accommodate it.
I'm just simply pointing out, if it were a private owner making this application, they would probably be asked to be more specific about it, even if it were a future phase, is my experience.
Okay, well, I'm trying not to be vague. I guess the thing is, is we've included it in our thinking.
Yep.
Because we didn't want to shut the door on it, it came up as a question from the public, and we explored the possibility, but I haven't been told that I have an extra half million dollars to spend.
Oh, right, well, it's a question of future phase. Then, and these are just things I want to ask to make sure, because I don't know, how tall is the building in number of levels from the very lowest level of parking to the top level? Is it four? That's what I had heard.
Well, there are, essentially, but because the floor level's slope.
No.
It kind of goes up in half increments. I guess at its tallest, it's four and a half stories.
Four and a half, okay, just curious. And I know it has to be twenty feet back from the top of the bank, is that right? And there's absolutely no construction within fifteen feet of the top of the bank for the riparian buffers zone?
Well, that's an open question. I'm sorry.
So that, if you come to the DRB hearing.
Is that a DRB issue?
Are we dealing with the water setback and riparian buffers then? It's not within the Design Review regulations, so this can.
That's where I was guessing.
Yes.
Put it right at the end. Oh, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Laura Rose, again, could I just ask about from Main Street, when you're looking across the bicycle bridge, wouldn't the garage obstruct the view of the Capitol there? If I'm on Main Street at Shaw's and I'm looking, wouldn't the garage, especially with solar panels, the towers itself, you said the garage was four and a half stories, the towers are taller than that, and the solar panels are even taller than that, should we get that far? So now I'm looking across from Shaw's, across the river, and I don't believe I can see the Capitol anymore. It is a beautiful view from Main Street.
We submitted a visual analysis, it's in the package. What's interesting is the existing Capitol Plaza is six stories tall. And so this proposed hotel is five stories tall, and the garage is four, four and a half stories tall. We took a photograph from across the street there on Main Street looking down the bike intersection, and that's what you see.
It's going to be right in the way. I'm thinking it'll be right in the way.
Here's the garage. Here's the Capitol Building. Here's the hotel.
The existing Capitol Plaza, which is a clear story.
We construct these things mathematically, I will vouch for their accuracy. I know people look at them and go, I can't believe it.
The little tip of the dome and nothing else.
The whole dome.
There's the dome. This is the hotel that is, well, this is the hotel that is previously permitted. And here's the garage.
Yeah, I just don't see the bottom of the dome, I just see part of it. I'm not quite sure.
You see as much of it as you do today, you will in the future. It doesn't jump out at you as much as you think right there.
So that, you submitted the most recent ones of those on, for the October first hearing, that helps you find it on there, if any of your folders are labeled.
Yeah, well, they were all labeled, but. I don't see those views in here. They're not on this drive anyhow, they must be on the Batman drive. Sorry.
Maybe the, maybe the City Council for ten, no, that's somebody that's designed reviews today. Yeah, was it the nine twenty-six City Council, maybe, and you then, I then got them on the first, provided them on the first?
I don't know, look in here.
What about that, City Council nine twenty-six?
Yeah, no.
No, City Council nine twenty-six.
Yeah, I just don't see, I don't see them in here unless they're in this set. Sorry. But we did, we did submit that, it's in the public record, right? And you've got a copy of it here.
And they're, and they're available on the website, on the city's website.
And did you have an additional question?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that that view there doesn't show the solar panels, so I do think that the dome would disappear should we be allowed to add the solar panels. I just wanted to, there's been very little public discussion of the fire safety. In reading the report, I know that the Montpelier Fire Department recommended that there be hoses in the stairwells, which would require, of course, heated stairwells. Could this be an expense that could be avoided? And wouldn't it result in a place where possibly teenagers or homeless people or other people may want to congregate a heated stairwell in a parking garage? You could access it if you were kind of behind the exit door, and the person exiting didn't see you, and you grabbed the door, then you could be inside, and you would be in the heating. I know that the code requires that we have to be within eight hundred feet of a fire plug, and I believe we're only forty feet from the State Street fire plug. So I'm wondering about the expense of heating the stairwells and also the expense of heating the roof to melt all of the Vermont snow, since there is nowhere to remove the snow to, there's nowhere to push it, we'd have to scoop it up in dump trucks. What kind of cost are we looking at to melt Vermont snow all winter long? Bill, I know you mentioned the heating on the roof.
So there's a lot to unpack there, but first, first of all, we have agreed to the fire, with the fire department, that we would have a dry suppression system in the building, including dry stand pipes in the stairwells. What that means is those systems normally don't have any water in them. They're, they have, they're, they're, maintain a vacuum in the lines so that if a head ever deploys, the system floods and then the water comes. So, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be heating the stairwells, we're not planning on heating any portion of the building. And the stand pipes in the stairwells, which are the hose connections you talked about, the stand pipes are dry unless they're charged, so they'd only be full of water.
It was in my discussion with the fire department that they said that that would have to be heated to be functional.
Go ahead. Wasn't there, wasn't there, didn't there need to be like one small space that was heated? Or did they, did that change or design changes?
There's a, we're still talking about the need for a server closet for the equipment that runs the parking equipment. That's mostly, that's, that's going to be handled with one little mini-split, because it has to be air-conditioned as well.
Yeah, no, I, anyway, this is something we can bring up in front of the DRB, because it's not really the design.
Yeah.
It's a design reg, I don't think.
Well, we're not planning on heating any of the stairwells.
Oh, you're heating the roof, and that's part of the design?
It was requested by Public Works that we explore the use of district heat to melt the snow on the top deck. That was one of two options that we discussed with Public Works to remove snow from the project. The other was a tow behind snow melting device, which I still think is a good idea because you can use it in more than one place. But in either case, the snow will be, any snow collected is going to, is going to get melted rather than piled up. I don't expect there to be a lot of snow on the intermediate layers, it would just be the top layer that would require this. I have no idea how much that's going to cost to run, but this is, the city has this district heat system, and they really would like to extend hot water to this site to have that possibility. And so we've said yes.
I'm just wondering about the breakdown of the maintenance budget, because I'm sure the heating was considered in that, is it not a separate item in the budgeting?
Yeah, I can't speak about budgets, that's a bill issue.
Thank you.
You know, first of all, these aren't, sure. First of all, these aren't design issues.
Second of all, we, as Greg said, we're not planning on any internal heat cost, because the building isn't going to be heated, we're exploring district heat, we're already paying and running the heat system, so it would just be, have its own heat exchanger and come in, obviously, we could figure that in. We're in negotiation with the hotel, and ideally, if we can bring the line to them and use it for the garage, then it's a win for everybody in terms of that kind of thing. So those are still being worked out with Greg and with the hotel, but we don't expect a whole lot for heating costs. And so we're pretty comfortable with our operation budget.
Thank you.
Really sorry, I forgot, I had one more note. I misread what I wrote. So the other thing is, I am a little bit concerned, what is the height of the posts underneath of the walkway and then pathway that shows up in some of your renderings as being elevated, kind of like stilts?
Oh, along that ramp coming up?
Yeah.
Oh, well, they go from nothing to six feet tall, something like that?
Because I know the police have had problems in the past underneath some of our bridges, the people living there in the winter. And I also know that the Hany Lot historically has had severe problems with drug use and actually probably doing less than good things to young girls. And I wonder if we're not creating a possible new village location for these things to happen. And I know security cameras can help with some of that, but maybe you're going to, I'm sure you folks have thought about that. It seems to me it's a design issue to have all of that square footage up off the ground. And I just, if it's not Design Review issue, I'd just like it to get on the list for Development Review. Thank you.
Well, I sense you're looking for a response. Things are on stilts and things in that area, because we're using that as a portion of our flood control management program for this, for these combined sites. Dropping the, well, maintaining the grade at five eighteen for most of that area offsets enough floodwater that we can build this project without increasing the impacts on flooding in the area. We've conducted extensive computer modeling of that, and it turns out that the balance is close enough that if there were a flood, that this project would impact it by a few thousandths on edge. So substantial, substantially neutral in terms of its impact on flooding, which has been a goal right along. But that's why a lot of this stuff is on stilts as opposed to just filled up or buried. That, and we want to make sure that we maintain this garage as an open air garage, which means it doesn't require mechanical ventilation. We just make that by virtue of keeping the ground floor open, because the side against the church and around the hotel is, at the lowest level, is completely buried. So we need those openings to avoid having to mechanically ventilate the garage, which I think is a good thing.
And it is lit, you said?
It is lit, and I understand that the police department has been working with us on getting the correct security system.
There will be cameras.
Cameras, lighting.
For the most part, we, you know, this was a design choice we could make, that we don't have to have, the garages don't have to be, or the stairwells don't have to be enclosed at all. And sometimes that's a choice people can make, is to not enclose them. But in this particular case, because this is qualified as an open garage, we can enclose the intermediate levels with as much glass as we want. And so that's what we'll do, as you can see on the top of those stair towers, they've got a bit of glass on them, and I think they're more user-friendly when you can walk up on them and see into them without sort of thinking somebody's hiding behind the doors, I didn't want to mention that.
Perhaps the northwest one could be the operational one at nighttime.
Yeah, we can always, we can always limit access to those things with howler panic bars, but I would hesitate offering that unless there was somebody who lived next door and wanted to go around and turn them off occasionally. So. I don't, I don't have anything additional to offer. Any further questions from the board? Any further questions from the board or?
Would you run, just quickly run down the i- items? That will be passed along to?
Okay, so, well, and this is, are you in a space where you wanna try and do a recommendation sheet? Or is this a, my taking thoughts to the DRB and then the, the application coming back to you again?
I, I.
Well, I'm prepared to vote.
Okay, 'cause I know, I know the fence, the, the picket fencing is an issue.
Yes.
Um, and that's both along the, the ramping.
Yes.
And along the bottom of the building, right? So that's one thing you wanna have a recommendation on. You want to, do you wanna have bike racks on the boardwalk as well or just inside the garage or have it as an option?
Option.
Option?
Leave that as an option.
Okay. Um. To do art or and or signs at the, both of the different sort of alleyway entrances on both sides to make that welcoming. Okay, gonna make sure I go through everything I've got here. Um, structural elements, you like number one option?
Number one option with?
The number one option, make sure it's muted, raised.
Muted, dark, black, gray coloring.
Yep. Um.
So, again, so it doesn't compete with the other.
Yep.
Components.
Representation is for, as a placeholder only.
Yep, representation and placeholder only and de- and you want that as a competition, but within the scope of the design that we've, that you've decided upon?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then we've got, hold on. Uh, any comments on the, I mean, we talked about the height of the solar panels, but that's really just future, it needs to come back here.
It would be another.
Yeah, another permit.
Another application.
Yep.
Again, it's conceptual only at this point.
Yep, uh, good with the fixtures for the lights. Um, the three thousand Kelvin warmth for lights is good. Prefer black for the exterior fixtures, right?
I think that's the plan.
Okay, perfect.
They suggested in the plan, yes.
Okay. Good with the materials for the.
Cornice.
Cornice, thank you.
We talked about GFRC.
As an option?
We don't want EPIS.
Okay, so, so GFRC is what you talked about, there was another option too, right?
Polymer composite.
Okay, and those are both okay?
Yes.
And again, they would all be the same granite coloring.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, I have that, so.
As are all the rest of the bands around the building.
Typically, typically the lower ones are actually granite.
Okay.
It's only, it's only that cornice that we're gonna have made up.
Only the cornice.
The cornice will be to match the granite that's on the rest of the building and it's an option of polymer composite or the GFRC.
Okay.
Right? Um, option to put in fixtures or mountings to be able to hang temporary banners over the large artwork?
That's a good idea.
Yes, and then, like you said, that could be eyeballs bolts below the cornice work, which.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll figure out some, some attachment points and we'll just provide them. So that people aren't drilling through my flashes and stuff.
Yeah. And maybe also make sure we run that by police department.
Okay.
Does that sound?
What was the coloring of the flashing again, then, on the top?
Uh, black.
Black?
Okay with that, okay.
That's, I mean, that's the application, that's fine.
Yep. Yep.
Steel frames going around the openings, it should be fairly easy to provide some eyeballs to.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fasten stuff.
Structural engineering.
It's a good look, I, I, I hope all of you get a chance to see the, our project up in South Burlington where we've used this detail 'cause it's, it's, it's.
It's on Shelburne Road, right?
Yeah, it's near the McDonald's and the movie theaters down there.
So for the fencing, do you want that to come back or you just, there's a specific look you want for that?
I don't think we need to hold it up.
Okay.
But it would be nice to have a better solution.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll stipulate to that, make sure we show something to the development view board.
Okay.
And we can send, we can send it into staff so you can look at it before the development view board meets.
Functional but classic.
And, and not subvergent.
There you go, that's a block.
Basically, not what it is, functional but classic.
Yeah.
Um.
Just something that's compatible with the, the rest of the building and with the rest of the, the entire property and the entire project.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I didn't feel like we need come to, uh, o- options to make them.
To pack it up just a little bit, I apologize, in that structural steel scheme, number one?
Yeah.
Was that proposed to be, uh, like a powder coated black, is that what I, or where is?
Yeah, everything would get galvanized and then powder coated. And, uh, I like the black because we're doing that with other things here. Um, but, you know, I mean, those bridges are often green or, or kind of a.
Rust.
Rust red.
And the black, that, that.
I think with the, I think a rusty red kinda color would just flatten out with the brick.
Black is fine.
I'm happy with the black, I mean, that's what I'm doing in South Burlington and it looks sharp.
It's classic looking and it's subtle.
Yeah.
And again, it's not competing with the greenery or anything and the other components.
Yeah, and when we actually detail, we'll, we'll put some little details, you know, little stiffer plates and stuff in to make the connections interesting. You know, lots of extra bolts.
Or rivets.
I wish, I don't, does somebody do riveting anymore?
Okay.
You're welcome to it.
Frank Carey.
I guess, yeah, I mean, rivets would be perfect.
Okay. Um, so, make sure that there's an opening in the security fence on the ground level on the east side. Seems that wasn't actually in the presentation. Um, sorry, going through a bunch of different notes here to make sure we. And you guys were all good with the renderings, with the view sheds, okay, I just wanted to make sure. I think that's all I've got.
Oh, and the decking material we talked about, tropical hardwood, like an EPE or something like that.
EPE, yeah.
Sustainably.
R FSC, no doubt.
Right, or, or whether we can get a bunch of, uh, black locusts.
That would be.
It would be preferred, if we can source black locusts.
Okay, so. Black locust preferred.
Yeah, I don't know, what did they use on the Burlington bike path?
I think that's EPE, I believe.
'Cause I was doubting how well it's held up.
EPE is amazing.
It's a solid piece of material.
It won't even burn, it's incredible.
Oh, I'm putting EPE siding on a house I own right now. It doesn't screw or nail very easily.
No, you're pre-drilled everything, I know.
It's a good way to break a lot of stainless steel fasteners.
James, how do you spell that?
I P E.
E P I V E.
Okay.
It's also known as ironwood, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I can get any other details from the recording, I think. And that was the last item, that is a decking option?
If you have anything, a little more, if you have any drawings that show the landscaping that you'll go before the, not before the development view board.
Is any of the landscaping proposed to be edible?
Depends how hungry you are. Just kidding, numb.
By humans or deer?
That's it. I'm gonna, no, I was gonna think I could.
Were you hoping for berries or something?
Well, it occurred to me as a possible solution to one of the problems of getting people going underneath the thing
Oh, that.
Like this, one like this and then another one showing the plantings.
Oh, brick, yeah, no, yeah, that, that makes some sense.
Yeah, that could be, that could be attractive. Yeah, I, I agree with that or something, yes, absolutely.
It just makes that.
No, no, that's a good.
So you want them to, before, before it goes to before the DRB, you want them to do that?
It would be helpful when you go to the DRB to, you know, show this and then if you have a rendering showing the plantings you're proposing as well.
The rendered plan has, that should be in there, do you think that's sufficient?
I think he's looking for us to merge them together.
Oh, merge the, oh, okay.
Just merge that with this.
Merge, merge that with that.
Greg can talk to that.
Just with.
We, you know, we, we certainly can, I, generally speaking, we turn that layer off because it covers up so much information that we're trying to share with you. Uh, but it's.
Just being able to see both would.
It, it, it would be easy enough to turn it back on.
Be a nice perspective.
But you'll be surprised at how much this gets covered up by trees.
But it's gonna cover everything when they're in full leaf.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of 3D work on this one.
Steve, my, my preference administratively, uh, there's still some outstanding issues. The primary one I see is the signage and treatment of the two gateways. We have a meeting on the fifth for the DA, for the DRB.
Yep.
And I, I would, I, I think this has been a lot of improvement from a procedural basis. I, I think it's hard to prove, provide things where there's, approve things where you don't have as close to final plans as possible. I don't know what your schedule is on getting additional. I, that's the one thing that I would really like to see is that treatment and, and not, not just leave that hanging up in the air. And I think it's almost a, uh, thinking about it as a precedent of sort of, uh, this is a big project, so it's a little bit different, but saying, well, you know, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna fix that, so I want my approval now.
We, we have a whole signage plan that we're showing to the DRB, with traffic, could it be a part of that?
Yeah, I think he's just asking for that additional layer of wayfinding stuff.
Yeah.
Because, because we have all the yield signs and stop signs and stuff.
Yeah. Put that on that plan for part of the DRB.
I don't know, that probably should've come to, to us, signage stuff. I know it, we may not have authority over that, but certainly we look at an awful lot of signs.
Um, so the signage plan that we have right now is just stop signs, signs to eighty-nine and Route Two and like yield signs and no enter signs, they're all strictly traffic signs.
Okay.
The rest of the sign package that is like, here's, here's the garage and, and that kinda stuff was gonna be a separate application, any kind of true sign, signs versus traffic signs. And I, there hadn't been much discussion about the kinda signage you're talking about yet, so.
So, so without sort of, um, going all the way into designing that though, I think it's okay for us to indicate on the site plan a couple of spots where we need to have that wayfinding sign stuff.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm thinking, you know, something more than just signs, something that's really kind of a welcoming.
Right.
Design so that people know when they're walking down State Street, walking through that parking lot, this is the way you get to the river.
Could.
Because for somebody that doesn't know, there's n- no way to know the river is there.
You're right.
Could, does it make sense to have that as, this is something that needs to come back with the rest of the signage package? That we, not, not the traffic signage, but wasn't there another layer of signage that you were thinking about?
Well, nor- normally we would hand that off to somebody like Sparky Potter and they would handle that.
Yeah.
Empty in signs mounted on the building and the enter and exit signs and all of that.
And it seems like some of this would not be on our property and it would be more of a city thing, perhaps.
Well, I understand what Eric's thinking.
I know what you're saying too, I'm just trying to.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to make sure you have enough time to really get.
Yeah, incorporate that as part of this or have that as a separate?
I, I, I don't know, I just wanna.
That's a great point.
You know, uh, make sure that we're not approving some kind of an idea, well, we're gonna fix this.
Yep, well, that's what I'm saying, either put it as a condition, ask the DRB to put it as a condition is they have to come back through the permit process to get that sign or bring it on Monday? I, I'm just trying, I'm just throwing out options.
Yeah, I, I.
Time on the fifth?
Well, this would come first and other people who are currently on DRC for the fifth might get bumped. 'Cause I think we have five or six applications for the fifth right now.
I don't know, I, I just, uh, I'm, I'm just, I think this is, is more than a sign issue.
Mm-hmm.
That's all. That's.
What do you feel comfortable with? I mean, do you wanna just say, I have that as a total separate application? Or, uh, add on to this rather than have all that as part, as part of this at this point in time?
If that implies we approve this as designed, I, I don't like that idea because I think it needs to happen.
You think it needs to have this sign?
And, and I think if we approve this and say this is gonna be a separate application, then the implication is, okay, you can, whenever you wanna do that, you can do it, you've been applied for it.
Uh, do, well, you could put a time limit on when they have to apply for it, but you don't, if you don't like that, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
You know, there's other people on here, I don't know whether, I'm just being too picky here.
Feels to me like this is a big project that should probably happen and that, like, being able to go to the voters before November sixth.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, we have a meeting on the fifth that should be fairly easy to look at the limited items and get that done since we discussed this thing, so.
That, that would include this wayfinding stuff that you're suggesting.
Yeah.
Something on the signs, what else would we have to have ready for Monday?
What, what other thing, oh, for the, to just to show them the, the traffic management plan signs, you mean?
Uh, well, the, the, the sign stuff, I, I meant the fences.
Yes, fences.
I was looking at you, the fence, the fence back.
If, if this cart creates too much of a problem, I would just.
Well, I, like I said, we'll get our approval when we earn it.
Mike has something to say then.
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Mike Miller, the planning director, and so I just, the, the wayfinding piece, I think, um, you know, my, my two cents on that would be, I, I, that's, there's a separate project that is being run by Montpelier Alive for wayfinding. I just don't think I would recommend developing a separate wayfinding package just for the, just for this and have it built into this. I would probably go and task the wayfinding committee on Montpelier Alive that's been doing the wayfinding project for the rest of the downtown to go and simply make this consistent, you know, and, and develop a plan that's consistent with what they're doing for all the other wayfinding.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking about more than signs though, Mike, in terms of designing entrances that have a, you know, a, a larger visibility, it's not just signing. It's making these entrances visible from the street and looking like entrances to the river. That's, that's my point, it's signing, I'd, I'd find if it's just signing, we can figure that out.
So it's making structural differences to the buildings.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what, uh, what, uh, Greg would suggest in terms of, 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 of doing that and, uh, making sure that these are pretty obvious entrances. I don't know whether it's a, some kind of an arch or canopy, just.
Yeah.
An idea that, uh, uh, that's.
Some sort of symbolic gateway.
Yeah.
Arts, art and street furnishings to reinforce the idea. Yeah, I, 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 I think I get what you're driving at. You know, I'm just, I just would like to find an efficient way to get it back in front of you 'cause I don't think it's a lot.
Yeah, and, and I recognize the need to, to, to act on it and give something to the DRB.
I just observed that, the, the connection between the garage and the hotel isn't really changed significantly from the prior approval and that had a gateway to the river, the same walkway going through and none of this was required or asked at that time. We're all for doing this, but I, I do think perhaps we're adding a whole different standard and there is no signage now showing anyone going down through the Heaney parking lot to the hotel. We're, so, again, we're not opposed to it, but I, I am a little concerned about holding up a project, seeking a standard that is higher than an already approved project that's virtually identical. My two cents.
I, I, Bill, I do think the project has changed enough in terms of, of blocking the river that we need to emphasize this access, that's all.
I agree with that.
And I don't wanna ha- I don't wanna hold the project up, I just wanna make our process, uh, something that, uh, if you wanna do it conditional, that's fine, whatever.
That was best to make that recommendation, I mean, we're either.
I mean, it's, it's your options, you can have it come back or you can have it as a, they need to show it to DRB, but it's not gonna be your option to view it. And it either comes back on the fifth.
How, how many things do we have that have a relative, the fence and?
The, the fencing and.
And this.
Are the things that you really need to look at, otherwise you've got clearly what your, your, your recommendations are.
I also unfortunately wanna bring up one other thing, which is I don't feel like we've talked about the railings other than they were talked about sort of as, I feel like.
Right, so the fencing railing, yes, that's what, that's what we're saying, that that, if this comes back and that would be one of the things to show options.
Like all those, is what the public really interacts with, like touches and feels, like I want that to be.
Good.
Yep, those two things would come back.
More than just like plopped there, but really understood. And maybe it is more than, the way I understood it from, in this meeting.
Well, no, I mean, we gotta, you know, we gotta cut sheet, we gave you something fairly plain spoken and generic, and I think.
All right, I mean, this shows the horizontal, what appears to look like a cable rail type system, and then the cut sheet for the gates that are on the building are not the same.
Right, no, I, I think we can deal with that, but.
I don't wanna hold a project up.
No, 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 I understand, we can send you something right away about that. If this were a condition expressed to the D R B, I could still come by and show you our solutions on the fifth. Where you'd have the flexibility of not having to take a further vote on it or whatever. Either that or have me back on, I, I mean, if, if this is gonna, if this is gonna be a sticking point and it's your call, then, then we'd like to come back on the fifth, cause I'd really like to wrap it up with the D R B right later that evening.
Well, and that's, it would, it, it can come back on the fifth, we just, some people may get bumped, that's all. We were looking at potentially bumping some people if somebody ran long on the fifth anyway.
If you could have your motion ready to go though, or however, you know, it's.
Yeah, and it's, it's a recommendation forms, so, yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay.
I'll come back on the fifth if I.
Come back on the fifth. Try to option through those two remaining issues, and then the rest of it will be recommendations forwarded to the development review board.
I can draft those up so that we can sort of have an attachment sheet for the recommendations that you can.
Maybe we would, I would make a motion, you know.
Can we get it in advance?
I'll send it over soon if it's ready.
We approve the project.
Well, I mean, we're talking, it's Monday now, we're talking weekend today.
Okay. Eric's standing.
I, I would make a motion that we approve the project with the exception of these three very specific items. Does that make, does that make any sense?
No, that makes sense.
I mean, that, and then, and then those items need to, need to come back to us, and then I would assume it would be very quick. And it would be before the D R B, does that make sense to you, Bill?
Or is that, you really can't approve a project and not the rest?
I mean, I, you know, I'm asking, if I don't wanna hang, through some little thing, hang this project.
I think the vote on November sixth is important, and I think that, like, if we're showing a vote of confidence towards something and not, like, holding it up, I feel like that offers our community some sort of something.
And, and, you know, gonna have a hot news item, as I said, since November fifth, it's just one day before November sixth.
Um, well, but I think there's a lot of banter about it going around on Front Porch Forum and various other places, and if there is at least some sort of non from our committee that this.
Can, can, can we go through the list and approve it and then just?
Um, I.
Condition?
I, I don't think, I think, don't, I don't know if you can, yeah, you can't partially approve it, what you can, and maybe Mike, Mike's still here, Mike knows this a little bit better than I have, I think what you can do is maybe just say, those are the last three. Items that you want to review.
Yep.
I mean, would it, would the whole, everything still be open for further discussion at the next hearing? And I think you can close just part of the evidence.
Can we scra, can we scrouple and then pick it up?
But I also don't think you can.
We can approve it, we can.
You ca, yeah, I don't think you can approve it, you can, you can, I mean, we've, we've discussed already that the.
Done it before.
Gateway sort of entrances.
I like that as a solution.
And the railings and fence, those are the last items that you need to, that you want more information on.
We've scroupled before though, can we scrouple now?
I haven't, I, I, that's, that's me, Mike.
Procedurally, you, I think you can, you can scrouple early, I think, um, you can certainly go through and make, um, a process decision that would go through and say, we're only gonna consider these three items. The hearing itself technically is open to everything, so if the public had concerns about design elements that you weren't, that you've already made your decisions on, I think you're obligated to, because the, the decision is still open.
Yeah, there.
But from a, from how you manage yourselves, you guys can go and say, we're not asking Greg to revise anything other than what we're giving him, and he's agreed to come back to talk to us on these three points. And we're gonna constrain ourselves just to these three points. That, that I think would be the prospect, I don't think there would be a, you know, there could be a scrouple. But it wouldn't be binding, that would be my interpretation.
Right, I think that's the point.
Okay.
I think the scrouple is that everything's acceptable, but again, those three items, would like to take a look at, uh, the railing, is there any way to show a. I mean, we've seen, we've seen some of the other, uh, some of the other. Pictorals of what it looks like from the front, but nothing like this showing from the side.
Okay, you're asking for an elevation from where?
Landscaping, so in other words, what we'd be looking at is a color representation of what this looks like from State Street.
Like an elevation or a perspective?
A perspective, just, yeah, just like this.
Just like that, just.
So you can see what that entrance looks like going between the buildings and on this side.
You're suggesting, I couldn't see what you're pointing at, but looking down the Montpelier parking lot?
In other words, with, with everything, with, with this new package here, is there a way to, you know, short perspective looking at it from State Street, so you see what it actually looks like?
Yeah, from, from State Street?
From State Street.
Yeah.
And we saw some of the earlier.
Other versions we did.
Yeah, but, but, but to then throw, put in the more welcoming entrance possibilities, right, for the pathways.
Would, I mean, that, that way you're including your landscape plan again, and, and a colored representation of what it's actually gonna look like when you're walking down to that entryway. To come to the back of the building and to the river.
Right, and so either a northern elevation or a perspective, okay.
And, and I think since it's suggested first, I mean, you're not designing the signage, right?
Right.
So, but some suggestions for.
Yeah.
Sign content and location would be really helpful.
Get the feeling of something special with that. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we'll sort of say there's gonna be a sign here, it's gonna be this big, and this is the purpose of it, and then when. Sparky Potter or the committee that's doing this around town comes up with what they're supposed to look like everywhere, cause I, I saw a presentation by that group. You know, they've, they've got things they're gonna hang on street poles and stuff, you know, I think, we definitely wanna be keyed into that. I think, I think Mike's right, I mean, this is something that wants to be integrated.
So how do we do this, take a straw boat and then say this is a straw boat vote, and, but in the, in the next meeting, we're only gonna consider these three?
Yes.
That makes sense to me.
I don't vote, so.
No.
With the exception of the three items to be addressed at the next meeting on the fifth, uh, all in, all, everybody who is in favor of the other components, uh, raise your hand. Where are the items left?
Yeah, I, obviously, a lot of moving parts to this, some other things are getting done, so I've got more time to focus on that, but we'll, we'll get that to you as quickly as we can this week. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
And again, if we can, if we can get offices of that as soon as possible, we'll get it and, you know.
Uh, some of it'll come quickly, I think we're gonna take, we're gonna have to take some time to think about what Eric wants, cause I, it's, it's more than one idea, I think, that needs to happen.
And all of us can deal with the mail stuff. Yeah, from looking from.
Well, I'll send it to staff, yeah, right, she can share.
No, no, I understand, I understand whether it's an elevation or perspective.
Thank you, we have this, we have this package.
We're getting there, it takes this.
It might've been in the bigger packet where we had it, but it didn't print out well.
Okay.
But again, always, always seeing from the other side.
Just, uh, have to go there.
I like coming to my Twitter.
You feel like it, you're, they're gonna start a commuter rail.
Thank you.
Alright, so, here's a question for you, I know we need to wrap everything up, but I do have packets for Monday with me right now. For everything else that's currently on the agenda, do you wanna wait until I get everything that Greg is gonna provide, and then put it all together, so you have everything in one envelope?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna hold on to those then, and then get them all in the.
If we can either get printed material or by email or whatever, um, for the additional items.
I mean, that's, hopefully it'll be printed and just added to these packets that I have now and then put.
But I'd like to get that as soon as possible.
Yep.
Yeah.
Within, and I see if we can do it in the next couple of days.
Yep.
I would just assume, get that sooner than later.
Yeah, oh, agreed, um, the, the, if I, if for some reason I haven't gotten that from him before end of the day Thursday, these packets are gonna go in your, oh, oh, at the police station, you can pick up. And then hopefully I can just email it to you, cause Audrey's out of the office, so trying to make sure you get that through proper channels. Um, and I will write up what we've got in here for the recommendation sheet, so that you guys can review that and mark it up, so you have a script for.
It's hard, there are a lot of moving parts of this, and usually we review much smaller projects, and we ask for specifics on smaller projects.
We have to.
Yeah.
And they're, like the fencing, fencing and the railings, that's sort of, you know, just thrown in. It should look better and be more specific, so, and, and again, that'd be sort of a rock and hard place, cause you don't wanna hold up, hold it up, but you want it to be complete.
Who knows what's gonna happen with this, but I wanna be, be able to be confident that the design review is done, it's due diligence, we didn't, we didn't just.
Push it along, cause I can accept that, I accept that, Eric.
I understand the deadlines and the work, the work with, you know.
I just did wanna sort of at least show some confidence to the world that we're behind the project.
And then some of, you know, some of the items, uh, you know, like everything's up on peers, uh, who knows, it might become a homeless encampment underneath, but you deal with a lot of that stuff.
That's a police issue.
Yeah.
In case you need to.
Yeah.
I mean, at some point in time, if they need to do, you know, some six inch metal fencing underneath.
We hope not.
Block it off, I mean, you do what you need to do to deal with a problem.
I love my raspberry solution, but yeah, sorry.
So, do we need to adjourn at this point, or is there other business?
We have, we have agreed to, uh, to table that and coming back with the three items on the fifth, and everybody, I mean, we didn't make a motion.
We need to adjourn. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, no, no, I just, I just mean, yeah.
Yes.
I'm just doing other business and adjournments, so, cause are you still recording?
Yeah.
Cause we haven't adjourned yet.
So, we're here, a motion, uh, to adjourn.
Yes.
In the next meeting, we'll be back here on November the fifth.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Okay, back on the fifth.